Okay, good morning. It is Thursday, October 26th. And I think, could be, I think it is, the last week of October, we'll be meeting in open session. So a happy upcoming Halloween to those who partake. Before we get started, let's stand as we always do for a pledge of allegiance and a moment of silence.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, and just before we get started, I'm wishing blessings to all those that have lost their lives in Maine, because I think there was 20-plus, and it's a horrific act for a community that was definitely not expecting it. So, yeah, just may their memories that have been lost be blessings to their loved ones in that community. Okay, let's start with Priority Carol, Commissioner Goren.
Thank you. Good morning, Carroll County. I'll be brief. We've got a busy day ahead of us. But I have got the pleasure of announcing that yesterday, South Carroll Golf Team, oh, there we go, the South Carroll Golf Team did win the two A-1A state championship. I know we talked about them a couple of weeks back, but I want to wish them all congratulations. What an incredible accomplishment. Coach Matthew Johnson, excuse me, Joseph, and then the players Patrick Carl, Patch Carl, Michael Valerio, Jack Lor, and Chase Loden. And I also want to mention Josh Vendemia, who's also in this picture. He was always the alternate for the golf team, and that's a tough golf team to start on. So my congratulations to all five of those young men. What an incredible accomplishment to win, to win the state championship. They beat, they beat out Poolsville, Fallston, Glen Elg, that one feels good, and Stephen Decatur and Milton Wright. So again, congratulations to the South Carroll Men's Golf Team. Go Cavs. That's all I have.
Okay. Commissioner Gordon?
Thank you. Good morning. Just wanted to mention a couple events from the past week or so. Last week, myself and Commissioner Kyler attended the Carroll Community College Foundation Scholarship Reception. Very well-attended event with many members of the community and students. It was quite impressive and compelling to listen to some of the testimonials from a number of the individuals that spoke that day. Quite impressive. There were 479 scholarships that totaled $407,000 that were given out within the past year. And I think it's very safe to say from some of the testimonials that we have a very bright, prosperous future in Carroll County with the education going on over at our community college, and appreciate everything that they're doing. Secondly, I wanted to bring up a topic which has been consistently in the news the last week or so from local law enforcement, which is vehicle theft prevention. There's been an array of issues nationally and even, I'd say regionally of late, but also definitely in our community. So make sure you lock your cars, make sure you take your valuables out, just be aware. There's been a number of them within the past several weeks. So just something to be aware of as we progress through the fall season, and really any time of the year for that matter. This past Saturday, I attended the Westminster Spooky Saturday, which was in downtown Westminster for kids for the Halloween season. And also, they had the Clock Tower event on Back to the Future Day. So they had the ribbon cutting that myself, Commissioner Kyler, and Delegate Tomlinson were in attendance at. So the city clock tower has now been fully restored. I'd say almost to its former glory, but actually taken a step forward as they were very fortunate to increase the lighting on that building, on that property. So they're able to change the lights to an array of colors. And of course, with Back to the Future Day, how could you not have a DeLorean present? So it was kind of cool.
You also had the vest from Back to the Future.
Yes, yes. Wrong color, but we had a vest.
It wasn't red, but...
No. Thought I'd wear a vest and some plaid there. Two other quick things I just wanted to mention briefly. I had mentioned, we have the, on Saturday is the Crab Cake Festival that will be held at the Farm Museum. It'll be the Reagan years, the Amish Outlaws. There'll be breweries, crab cakes, food trucks, and a variety of vendors this Saturday. I will be in attendance, and I have the tough job of judging crab cakes, so...
How come you didn't share that with the rest of us?
They reached out to me. I had nothing to do with this. Two other things I do want to mention, and I'm going to let my colleagues talk about this. Yesterday was the 10th anniversary of Veteran Services Program. That was very well-attended, and I think I can speak for all my colleagues in saying that it's something we're all very dedicated to, and we look forward to seeing where we can take that in the future for our veterans in the community. Also, in relation to that, though, I do want to mention, and I do want to give our staff another shout-out for taking the time locally to change the lights here on the building for breast cancer awareness. November 6th through the 12th is green light for veterans in November. So I'm hopeful that maybe staff could assist us with that, and we could light the building green for that. And just anyone else that's, you know, at home, you know, if you can, change your lights green and, you know, show your support for veterans. I'll definitely be doing that on my house. And one other thing from yesterday which was mentioned was the, the state has come up with a mission, I'll say, for Ask the Question: Have you or a family member ever served in the military? So the hope is to try to identify veterans that may not be taking advantage of the resources that are out there. I won't go too deep into this this morning, but I had a conversation very briefly yesterday with our county comptroller. I have an idea that might help us kind of push that message out there. And I'm hoping maybe the five of us collaboratively or anyone else could come up with some ideas of how we can reach the public in any way, shape, or form to get that message out there as we progress. But thank you.
No, absolutely. Thank you. Commissioner Kyler?
I want to mention, we didn't have a meeting last week, and several of us went to New York City for the bond rating. And I learned something. I seem to always be learning something here. But the only reason, not the only reason, the main reason I want to mention it, a lot of staff put that presentation together. And, and we were complimented by one of the consultants that it was the best presentation they'd seen all year. And that's not due to me stuttering and not saying my words well at the presentation. That's due to who put the plan together, and it was awesome. And I want to thank everybody in this building that was involved. The clock tower, that was great, and they had a DeLorean there. I don't know, with your vest, did you get to drive it or anything?
No, they wouldn't give me the keys. I tried.
And that was great. Also, on, on the weekend, we had a yard sale at our church, and I set up a table with a lot of Carroll County information. And it was windy. It wasn't the best day, but, and stuff blew around. But a lot of people were very interested in Carroll County, the veterans, and some of the paperwork I had there. And again, I want to thank staff for putting some information together. I noticed all my business cards were still there, and any of my personal stuff was still there, but they seemed to like the county stuff. On Sunday, we got to go to the 240th anniversary of Stone Chapel United Methodist Church. And it was awesome. A great group, relatively small, obviously older church, but packed. And, and it's interesting, and I try to say I love Carroll County every time I'm here, but there we were over on Union Bridge area, New Windsor area of the county. And one of the people was somebody that I dealt with a bunch at North Carroll High School. And, you know, it's just, people just, so many, one, their layperson, senior layperson on the, right there is a teacher out at Career and Tech. And I told, and it's a pastor there in the middle. I told her he'd probably correct my grammar and pronunciations. I have a teacher standing there, and he backed off a little, but that was, that was awesome. I went to a ribbon cutting at Finksburg Pharmacy this week and got to meet the previous owners, the new owners. It's been there 20 years now, and that was the ribbon cutting, the 20 years. But it's hard, in Carroll County, we're blessed here. It's, it's hard to maintain independent pharmacies in today's world. And the couple that did own it, and it's interesting, the ribbon cutting was also on their 31st anniversary, and they both told me they didn't have time to do dinner or anything that day. They were too busy. Who'd have thought? But they were worried. They didn't want to sell it to a chain. They wanted to make sure it stayed independent, and I just think that was awesome. And, and they have everything there. They're right at Suffolk Road, 140. Stop, stop and support them. On, yesterday, the Maryland Economic Development was up at Antrim. I feel like, and you got to learn, we can't make everything, but with the veteran stuff going on, I did stop up there, but I think if I could have stayed another four or five hours, I would have heard some very interesting stuff, and I appreciate what they did. And Carroll County's so lucky. We had two secretaries there. We had one in Westminster. We, we're a great little county, and I think people in Annapolis are seeing it. And, and one of them mentioned, and I believe it, Governor Moore tells them, "I didn't appoint you to set in Annapolis. If you're going to deal with the state, you need to get out there and visit." And they are, and we're blessed by it. We're going to meet, we're going to have a joint meeting with ESAC later today. And, and I want to emphasize, there's a lot of things go on in Carroll County. Some great, some negative, some need fixing. Reach out, any of us here. Contact us. I don't care if it's in my district, not, these guys feel the same. If you, you have an issue, you want to compliment somebody, reach out to us and let us know. We really, really appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Vigliotti?
Thank you, Commissioner Rossin. Given that we have the agenda, we do, I'll do my best to be compendiumary and touch only, brief. I'll be as brief as I can and touch only a couple of things. So Commissioner Kyler, to your point about celebrating good people and giving credit where it's due, I will point out that Jay Michi, the Economic Development Director of Tawnytown, has for nearly a year been the driving force behind getting that conference to the Antrim. And so I want to give him a shout-out for that. So last week, I had the privilege of filling in for Commissioner Kyler at the Community College Board of Trustees monthly meeting while he and Commissioner Rossin and others are away in New York on a credit rating trip. The meeting went quite well, and it's always interesting to hear about how things are going on at the college. And of course, one of the main issues that they have, as the issue that we have in common, is how blueprint is going to affect their operations, and so that's an ongoing discussion. And they take a lot of comfort knowing that the Board of Commissioners and the Board of Ed were all in this together, along with our delegates and our senators. And just to be very clear, I want Commissioner Kyler to know that they did miss you, and they did not vote to keep you in New York. I also had the opportunity, along with Chris Hines, to attend what I think is a quarterly meeting for Heidelborg Materials Lehigh Cement Plant in Union Bridge, where elected officials and other members of the community between Union Bridge and New Windsor were invited to learn more about the company and the coming changes in management. I'll have more information about that in the future. But those who are going to be taking charge of the company in the coming months are absolutely committed to remaining an integral part of our community and the county, and want nothing more than to not only be good neighbors, but to be involved neighbors. And so I know we're all very much looking forward to that continuing relationship. As a Christian, and specifically as a Catholic this Sunday, as Commissioner Kyler had mentioned, I had the chance to do probably one of the coolest and most meaningful things that I've done as commissioner so far, and that was to attend the 240th anniversary of Stone Chapel United Methodist Church. It was a beautiful ceremony and service, wonderful people, and it goes to the heart of our values as a county, where we all find a common foundation in God. And over the years, I've been to quite a number of churches in the county, and I always feel welcome at all of them. And for this one in particular, what made it, you know, really awesome, what made it endearing was that I was able to worship alongside Commissioner Kyler and his wife Rhonda. And so that was just a really cool part of that experience, and that's a memory that I will always hold on to. Last but not least, I'll very briefly touch on the fact that I attended the 10th anniversary of the county's Veteran Services Program yesterday, and we're very grateful for Secretary of Veterans Affairs Anthony Wood, who attended and spoke. And I will compliment all of my fellow commissioners on the words that they shared yesterday as well. They all spoke very eloquently and very well. And I also want to thank Celine Steckel, Gina Valentine, and everybody who's involved in the day-to-day work of that program for what they do for our veterans. I think 10 years of that program is a testament to how we do cherish our veterans in the county, and I'm looking forward to decades more of that service. And last but not least, I'll associate myself with the comments that Commissioner Rossin made about those who have suffered in Maine after that tragedy. My heart, my prayers go out to them, and they also continue to go out to Israel as well. And that's all for me this morning, Commissioner. Thank you.
Can I say one more thing quickly? Sorry. The veterans... The veterans' celebration at Westminster Senior Center, and it was probably the first time I've been there, a couple people there told me, they kind of hanged around longer than they normally did. There seemed to be a lot of people staying in that room, and again, I want to compliment our staff for making that so friendly. It's hard, it's hard to get some of those veterans involved, and you've talked about that numerous times, but you guys did it yesterday, and they hanged around, and I don't know, you probably had to boot them out after a few hours, I don't know, but compliments to making that happen. Sorry, I forgot that.
No, I appreciate it. That is Larry also, to the left of me, and Celine, and Larry's pretty phenomenal.
Who's that on your shoulder, by the way?
Oh, no.
Oh.
Oh, there he is.
If you've, you've got to go, you've got to go two people to the right. That gentleman with the hat kicked Commissioner Vigliotti's butt in pickleball.
Yes, he did.
While he wore a tie, but he kicked his butt.
Yes, he did.
Okay, and there's also the secretary, and I do appreciate all the discussion for our veterans' activities and programs, definitely highlighted over at the Senior Center, and all those that have been involved and engaged. And the success of our veterans' programs is the selfless service of all those engaged and involved, and is the teamwork from everyone engaged and involved. It's not an individual about the veteran services. It's about good ideas, latching on to them, and making things happen, and that's what we should be so proud of. You know, I do look forward to what the next 10 years will be for our veterans, just like the last 10 years. We've come a long ways, from one VSO to a few VSOs, and Secretary Woods does say that no one does it better in Carroll County, and we are a template for the state. You know, and as Commissioner Kyler shared, we had three secretaries with us yesterday. We had Secretary Addick, Secretary Anderson Commerce, and then Secretary Woods. And I tell you, this administration, just like you shared, they are directed, designed to get out to the community, and, you know, I am really impressed. They're putting their miles on and engaging. The credit rating was discussed, again, the preparation definitely showed itself because we were able to perform well, and I look forward to results coming in just a couple weeks. So, you know, not just the facts that we were able to lay out, but the preparation of those facts really told a wonderful story for Carroll County and Carroll Countyans. You know, we are an integral part of the region. That's why MEDA, the Maryland Economic Development Association, had their conference up. Mr. Michi, you know, highlighted the value of Tawny Town, although it was first named Taney Town by one individual, and he got almost booed off the stage. So he corrected himself once recognized and went to Tawny Town. But it really was a wonderful event, and we ran off from there, went to the veterans' event, and Secretary Woods, that was wonderful. Then that afternoon, I went over to Piney Run to the Rec Council, and the Rec Council, you know, it's about volunteerism. It's about people, you know, just doing their best for no other reason but to take care of their family, friends, neighbor, and community, and really applaud that, and applaud, you know, the team from Dave Ferguson on down within the Rec Councils and the work they do. Okay, let's stop there. We do have a full agenda, and let's go right up to item number one, which is the contract renewal, to extend, renew the payment in lieu of taxes, the pilot agreement for Westminster Bond Senior Apartments.
Thanks.
Again, Celine, great job, and it was always great to embarrass Gina
Thank you.
by bringing her up there with me.
Thank you very much.
She is a rock star, as you know.
She is.
And Jenny, you're not too bad yourself, as you prepared for the credit rating. You did a great job, and I look forward to hearing back from you in just a couple weeks, right?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, who wants to take this on?
I'll start out, and thank you again, commissioners, for attending yesterday. It was an excellent event. We're here this morning with you with, we are requesting approval to extend and renew the payment in lieu of taxes pilot agreement for the Westminster Bond Senior Apartments. And with us today, we have Kevin Day. He's the Senior Vice President of Portfolio Management for Conifer Realty. We also have Kelly Schaefer with Schaefer and Schaefer LLP. Obviously, I'm Celine Steckel, the Director of Citizen Services. We have Jenny Hobbs with us as well, our comptroller. And Danielle Yates is joining us, our Bureau Chief of Housing and Community Development, as well as Bynita Mayer in the audience, Community Support Specialist with Conifer as well. So we kind of have a full group of folks here. This is a very involved topic, and we want to make sure we can provide as much detail as you may have questions for. Carroll County entered into a pilot agreement in 2004 with Westminster Bond Senior Associates LLC with Conifer, which allows that property to be exempt from payment of Carroll County's ordinary real property tax through the payment in lieu of taxes, otherwise known as a pilot. We're not talking about air travel or flying planes. So it's sometimes, the pilot agreement with Westminster Bond Apartments has expired. There was an extension given by the past board, but only for a period of time to allow this board to make the final determination on the longer extension of 15 years. So Westminster Bond Senior Apartments wants to present to you information in detail today on the importance of why this project and the pilot, and how it allows them to offer lower-cost rental units for our older adult population. Jenny is going to present, from a comptroller perspective, about what a pilot means and really what that does as far as the taxes are concerned.
Sure. Sit up.
That's okay.
Good morning. So just a little background, pilot, as Celine said, was a payment in lieu of taxes. We do have, under a provision in the Maryland State Property Tax Code, the county has the option to exempt properties from so much, certain taxes for property, real property, as long as that corporation or that business has met certain requirements, and there's certain restrictions and requirements, and one of them is providing low to moderate-income families or seniors' housing rental. So currently, as Celine said, Westminster Bond has received 60, oh, I'm sorry, anything above $62,000 currently is exempted from property tax for the county property tax.
So what we're going to do is, we're going to have Conifer, they prepared a PowerPoint presentation. We actually updated some of the slides, and that's why we provided you with the new PowerPoint presentation that Danielle handed out as we started here today, and we have it on the computer.
At the transfer station.
What I'd ask is, as you're doing this, share with us the difference and changes that you have made from the last time you came here to now. I think it'd be good edification for my colleagues on why decisions were made previously, and now why you're asking for a change in those decisions.
Sure. So hi, my name's Kevin Day. I'm from Conifer. Conifer is a full-service real estate developer that focuses exclusively on affordable housing. We develop it and build it and manage it, and so I'll talk a little bit about Sunnybrook Senior Apartments here in Westminster. Before I start, though, I would like to recognize the service of the veterans here in Carroll County, and as somebody with family members that have been in services, you know, to recognize and appreciate, you know, how you guys clearly, the programs that you do, and serve here, and value that. So thank you for that. So, you know, Conifer, like I said, we develop affordable housing. We've done stuff all throughout Maryland, a total of about 1,700 apartments and households that we serve in Maryland. Here in Carroll County, we have two properties, which is Sunnybrook and Westminster Way, which was only completed about a year and a half ago, and, you know, currently serves 55 households and provides the affordable housing to those families. So Sunnybrook Senior Apartments, it's on Frog Drive, which is tucked away off of Bond Street over by Kings Park. You know, it's, you wouldn't really know that it was there unless you drove by it. It was built about 20 years ago, and it's built under the Low Income Housing Tax Credit Program, which basically allows, we get an investor who buys the credits, which allows us to build these affordable housing components, and then we cap the rents that we can charge and serve, you know, specific modest-income families. They don't get subsidy. We have a couple of families that do receive vouchers from the county here, but for the most part, you know, they're paying these capped rents, and we're serving a population of folks that have to be 62 or older, although the current average age of our residents is 78, and we provide 150 households with these lower-rent apartments. You know, that is a pretty critical resource here in Carroll County that they wouldn't otherwise have. Oh, and then here's just, we included a little bit of information about Westminster. You know, we were able to work with the city here and, you know, get this built, which was, it's not an easy process, so, you know, we appreciate the cooperation that we got here. And so, you know, the pilot was given originally. We, even though we get, we have to keep it restricted for at least 30 years, we only got the pilot term for about 15. And then from there, we came in to ask for an extension through the full 30 years, but the board at that time decided to only do it for three years, and given that there was going to be a new board, decided to defer that decision to this board. And so that's why we're back. And, you know, like I said, we have households that live there. On average, they've been there for at least five years, and some even that have been there for 15 years. So, you know, the problem with having these capped rents is that when our operating expenses go up, which of course they have been, including, you know, utilities, insurance, and just regular operating and maintenance costs that have gone up 20% over the last five years, and that makes it challenging to just maintain and upkeep the property. We have about $330,000 of needs, which we'll discuss a little bit, you know, includes siding, you know, just processing the trash that is generated and needs to be dealt with. And so that's why we're requesting this. Now, just to be clear, so, you know, we pay the city taxes, and then we are paying about 70% of the county taxes. So we're not asking for an exemption, we're just asking to keep that 70% level in place. And that helps us just keep up the property. So we've got some, you know, somewhat modest amenities at the property, a fitness center, hair salon. You know, it's not particularly fancy, but it's really, you know, it's almost a market-rate community that provides just a nice place to live. And like I said, you know, roofing, vinyl siding, the water heaters, the trash compactor, you know, these are things that we need to take care of that this pilot agreement lets us, lets us do. So I just wanted to keep it somewhat brief and certainly, you know, here and address all your questions.
And so if I'm understanding this correctly, the difference between the payment in lieu of taxes and the actual taxes is money that you put back in to these properties and to taking care of the people who reside in them?
Yes, it's...
You have 130 on the waiting list?
That's right, and that's, that can be a five-year wait. I mean, it's clearly a tremendous demand.
And you're paying full city taxes, 100%? Have you reached out to the city in the same type of request that you're asking from us?
No, so the pilot with the county was associated with the original tax-exempt bonds that were used to finance the property. And so, you know, that's, it's something that came with the original financing. You know, we don't necessarily have, you know, the grounds to go to the city and ask for this, but that's a good, that's a good idea.
I think it is.
And so this is not a, this is not a common thing for our area, I'm imagining, which is why it qualifies under pilot, correct?
Yep.
I'll make a motion to approve a 15-year extension renewal of the payment in lieu of taxes pilot agreement for Westminster Bond Senior Apartments.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Do we have any other, well, it's open for discussion now. Do we have any other pilot agreements in the county?
We do not, do not believe we have any other pilot, we have other credits and tax exemptions and stuff like that, but not anything like this.
We have other low-income tax credit properties. Danielle, I think maybe if you could just add the detail about the difference between what our Housing Choice Voucher covers at this property versus why the 60% AMI that you folks accept is helpful to seniors, that we can't help with the Housing Choice Voucher piece.
So HUD, of course, sets our income limits, and we assist individuals that are 50% or below, but the primary majority of who we assist are individuals that are actually at 30% of the average median income. The uniqueness of their program is they can serve individuals with 60% AMI or lower. So they're meeting the need for those individuals who don't quite qualify for our program, and they're still be able to give a subsidy assistance to them, which is greatly assisted with our individuals who are older adults only living on a fixed income with Social Security.
Is there a state residency requirement to live in any of these apartments? Do they have to be Maryland residents? Are they very much regular apartments, and anybody could live there from anywhere?
Yeah, I don't think there's restriction. I think probably under fair housing, we wouldn't be able to do that, but I, from my knowledge, they're all Maryland residents.
No, that's fine. I was just curious if that was a requirement.
Yep.
I would think they would change residency if they moved.
I mean, for the most part, you would imagine that, but they wouldn't have to. I was just curious if that was a requirement or not, so.
You know, it seems like it's a small amount. However, you know, we have these conversations about expenses and revenue, and this is taking revenue out. This is not, you know, giving us the additional dollars that we need for other services, and we need to be aware of that. That was my reluctance last time, whether it's a dollar or 7,000, 12,000, I mean, you know. Do you believe that the services would be so detrimental if you did not have this in place?
So, you know, we, for some of our older properties that, you know, are restricted for a very long time, you know, the challenge for us is just the upkeep of the property over that period. And so, you know, like I pointed out, you know, for us to figure out how to pay for some of the things that need to be done is the challenge. And so, you know, really, what we're asking is for, to keep in place the amount that we're paying and to not increase it. And, you know, I think, you know, it's, like you said, it's not a large amount, and implementing an increase, you know, is potentially to... an increase, you know, is potentially to the detriment of the upkeep of the property.
But it's still asking for us to subsidize the upkeep of the property.
That's right.
I mean, that's the, at the...
For the public benefit that it's providing.
Right. The other properties that, of the seventeen hundred or sixteen hundred, how many of those are under pilot right now?
Oh, I'm sorry, I couldn't tell you. We have about two hundred properties in total across a number of different states. I can tell you, a lot of those have pilots. I don't know how many in Maryland, you know, have that.
Kevin, let me jump in real quick as well, because not all of those properties are senior housing products either. That list that was at the beginning of the presentation is comprehensive of all of Conifer's projects. And the Westminster Way apartment building behind the Safeway that most of you are familiar with, that is not a senior housing product. So, it's still, everything that Kevin explained still applies to that but for the senior component. So, I think one of the important factors in your determination today is that this is for the benefit of the senior community that may not be eligible for other services through the county. And this really does allow Conifer to maintain a top-notch quality product. Part of the importance of the taxing, tax credit financing allows Conifer to put in the capital to develop a market-rate product that is then income-eligible, if you will. So, that's the, that's the impetus of the request to continue this in the benefit to the senior community specifically in the county.
So, Ms. Shaver, are you saying that we're only focused on the senior apartments, or we focused on both Sunnybrook and Westminster Way?
It's just Sunnybrook.
This is just for Sunnybrook.
This is just Sunnybrook, just a hundred and fifty units?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, I kind of misunderstood, I apologize. The, so, going back to that original question of the, just the senior apartments, and there's, you know, multiple in Maryland, do you know how many are subsidized?
With a, with a tax break?
Correct.
I mean, that's, that's often what enables us to develop these complexes. I can't, I can't tell you off the top of my head how many of those benefit from that, but I know it's a number of them.
Yeah, this was, again, that's why I'm asking, what is the difference in the ask or the presentation from last time to this time?
The ask isn't different.
Right.
Because, but it was limited to three years last time.
Right, because we wanted to wait for, before making a fifteen, was it fifteen or twenty years, fifteen years?
It's through the continuation, or it's through the life of the tax credit financing term, which is a thirty-year term overall. So, the request is to continue the pilot program through that period of the tax credit financing period.
And if I might just ask this question, maybe Ms. Tekl's could help us with this. So, we're dealing with, you know, senior population, obviously limited income, and this may not be an easy question to answer, but just hypothetically, if they didn't have access to this type of housing, where would that put them hypothetically, you know, situationally regarding residence or housing?
So, I think that Danielle actually has the rent with the FMRs, and she can tell you kind of the different...
Yeah, Social Security, the average that a retired individual who worked gets from Social Security is only about eighteen hundred a month, which leaves you at about twenty-two thousand a year income. When we look at a one-bedroom fair market rent right now, it's one-thousand-five-hundred-eighty-two dollars a month.
Yes.
If you do the math, that means that an older adult is going to be paying eighty-five percent of their income towards rent if they don't have any other source of income. So, this is greatly appreciate, you know, appreciated with our seniors. Like I said, they're serving a population income-wise that we cannot touch because of the regulations we have through HUD. I know that we have fifty-one individuals that we serve through Conifer. I know that it is one of the most popular older adult communities that we have. We only have six in total, including Sunnybrook and Carroll County. And about forty-four percent of the vouchers that we hold currently today are used completely for individuals that are older adults over the age of sixty-two as well. Does that kind of answer any of the questions?
It does, and I appreciate that. And obviously, as we all know, we're living in a community that we have a significant amount of older residents, and that's going to continue as, as time progresses. So, I think, you know, and I agree with your points about the revenue, which we all are very much looking at. I think the question is, if we're not open to this, does it then create a bigger issue on the other side? That's, that's my concern. I don't think there's a perfect situation when we're looking at revenue, not that that has to do with this component, but I think the question is, if we're serving that older population that doesn't have that income level, you know, where do they end up when they're only getting eighteen hundred a month if fifteen hundred theoretically would be going to, to housing?
No, I appreciate, and I just want to be clear, and I expect I missed this. Those that reside in Sunnybrook Senior Apartments have limited income?
Yes.
And their limited income is at what?
So, we're capped at sixty percent of the area median income. What that means is, so, folks who move in have to be below fifty thousand for the one-bedroom apartments, which is primarily what we provide. That, that's the top of their earnings.
So, yeah.
Now, we actually serve folks that are about twenty-five to thirty thousand is the vast majority of folks that live in our apartment on average. And that's, that's partly, some of them are subsidized through the county vouchers, so they're paying even less. And then, and just to be clear, so, you know, our rents are capped at about fourteen hundred dollars, and that's under the program. We're currently charging about twelve hundred and fifty, and that compares against the fifteen hundred plus that the county establishes as, as the fair market rent. And, you know, I mean, we do not want to be in a position where we're having to boost those rents all the way up to those maximum limits. I mean, that's one of the things that, because of the tax rate that we have, we're able to serve at a, at a lower cost than what we are required to.
And Kevin, just to clarify, when you say the cap, that's set by the IRS, correct?
Yes.
Because the IRS is who controls the tax credit financing.
Right, right. Okay. So, yeah, so, kind of going back to what you were sharing, because I agree. It's fifty thousand, so, you know, the eighteen hundred is one set, but there's a big, like, twenty-five, twenty-six, some odd thousand that goes above and beyond. I mean, not everyone is at that eighteen hundred, you know, a month. I mean, not with the standards that you put in place. And you don't know how many are at that fifty thousand, and how many are...
No, I can tell you, on average, the rents are just below, I mean, I'm sorry, not the rents, the average household income is just below thirty thousand of the folks who are living in our complex. And that's because they're on fixed income. I mean, that's the deal, they worked for their whole life, and now they get Social Security, and they're capped at that.
And I'm sure you have some turnover in senior housing. Does it stay full, is there a waiting list, how do you...
We have a hundred and thirty people who have applied to live in the complex and are waiting for a spot.
And Commissioners, just so you're aware, all of our senior housing complexes throughout the county have waiting lists.
Yeah.
I mean, there, there is no one complex that someone can walk in and say, "I want a unit today," and they come in.
So, therefore, if it's that competitive, why would we give a tax break to one and either not to others, or, I mean, why even have that? I mean, if there's that much competitiveness in the market?
I think you need to look at the amenities that they provide as well. So, when you look at some of these complexes, you're not going to have the variety of amenities that they offer and the services. So, I think sometimes you have to do that comparison as well. We can definitely compile something for you and give you some information later, I just don't have that.
Right.
Yeah, and then just also to clarify, you know, and again, we're paying seventy percent of the taxes and just asking for that thirty percent discount, which I think works out to about twenty thousand a year. And that is what enabled us to get this built in the first place. In, in a number of places, you know, we get the pilot agreement for the full term of the extension, you know, when we, when we get it built. And I don't know, you know, how this was determined back when this was built. And, you know, I mean, the truth of the matter is, we're just struggling with operating cost increases, just like everybody is everywhere. And yet, the families are on fixed income, our rents are capped, and, you know, that's what, that's what we're asking is for us to continue to provide the same level of service, same condition of the property, to continue this, the current arrangement.
And I'm curious from staff, what's the main reason why we should do this?
Well, and I think as Danielle said, you know, number one, they do have amenities there at the property. You know, I've been to the property in my previous roles here, I did Medicare counseling, they have a, they have a great room out there. They also provide other, other pieces to the puzzle, which is why this is one of the more popular properties for, for our seniors to look to live. I also believe that this allows them to do upgrades and keep the property at a nicer piece, but, but I think that, you know, I, your questions, I think some of the other properties that we're talking about also may have low-income tax credit pieces to their puzzle as well and different things that they've applied for. So, I don't think that Conifer is, is the only, the only company that's utilizing different tax credit options, but now they're coming to us to help to support this. The other piece is that after this, this fifteen-year extension is over, this would be the last of the pilot. It is, it would be, you wouldn't be eligible anymore for any additional ask or any additional extensions to this.
Right. And then, and we keep saying fifteen years, but we already got, we had fifteen years, we got a three-year extension, it's actually twelve years. So, just to...
Thanks, I was going to ask.
And I did also, I did want to point out on the briefing paper, I know that you mentioned twenty thousand dollar tax breaks, but if you look over the past few years, because your, your value, your assessed value has, has gone down a little bit over the years since twenty, FY twenty, but the, in FY twenty, it was ten thousand nine hundred and forty-nine dollars that was their credit. In FY twenty-one, it was twelve thousand seven seventy-eight, and again in twenty-two, and now in FY twenty-three, it was seven thousand two hundred and seventy-three dollars. It wasn't the amount that it once had been, had been higher over the years in the past.
Yeah, thanks, thanks for correcting that.
So, it looks like the assessed value at the end of this twelve-year period would be below the sixty thousand threshold anyway. So, I'm trying to recall if we had a motion.
Yes.
If we had a motion, I could call for the vote if we're done.
I think, should I, do I need to amend the motion, because I said fifteen years and now twelve years?
Probably just for clarity's sake, just amend it to be, to the end of the...
Term.
What's the word?
Oh, the extended use period, yeah, thirty years.
I will so amend the motion to reflect that.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion, I have a second. Is there any further discussion? There's been a call for a vote, all in favor?
Aye.
And I'm against. Okay, thank you, four one.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, let's talk about solid waste. Enterprise Fund, CIP budget transfer. Just don't like subsidize.
Another one of those items that feels backwards, you're going to be approving a transfer and then awarding a bid. This item about the transfer station floor has been to you previously. Cliff has described the problem and what we need to do to fix it. I am only here right now to bring the, bring the transfer, what, add a hundred and thirty thousand dollars to the existing project for the transfer station.
Okay. Is there a motion to transfer the funds?
Motion to transfer one hundred and thirty thousand dollars from Project six-five-two-eight to Northern Landfill Transfer Station Floor Replacement, CIP Project six-five-four-three.
Second.
Okay, I got a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on this? Seeing here none, all in favor?
Aye.
Now, what are we spending this money on?
Thank you very much. Okay, here's what we're spending the money on, good morning. I appreciate the timing here. And here's Maureen, okay. Do you want to do the first part? Maureen will take the initial part.
Morning.
The Office of Procurement in cooperation with the Bureau of Solid Waste requests your approval to enter into a service contract with the Northeast Maryland Waste Disposal Authority for the floor replacement at the Northern Landfill Transfer Station. The Northeast Maryland Waste Disposal Authority conducted a competitive bid process and awarded INL Construction LLC of Manassas, Virginia, a contract for this work conditioned upon approval by the Board of Carroll County Commissioners, and I will let Cliff take over.
Okay. Just a real brief from history, that's why I wanted to put the slides up. The transfer station floor replacement was a project that was approved in the fiscal twenty-three budget. As you can see from the pictures, a good portion of the transfer station floor has been collapsing, for lack of a better term, over the last several years and needs to be replaced. Basically, through the Northeast Authority, they went out for bid for replacement of the floor. We received, that bid included an option, I just want to point out, for a twenty-foot apron in front of the building, which we do not have currently. It was one of those, it'd be nice to have, so let's see how much it's going to cost us. We'll cover that a little further along the way. We essentially received six bids, or the Authority did, in response to the IFB. Through a process of clarifications and questions and review of those bids, two of them were deemed to be non-responsive or unresponsive to the scope. Coincidentally, that was the high bid and the low bid, so both of those bids were tossed out. The remaining bid ranges, range was from four hundred fourteen thousand eight thirty-one for the bid without the apron to five hundred fifty-four thousand four oh nine at the high end. So, the Authority, again, how we work with that is the Authority holds the primary contract with the vendor, and then we do a piggyback contract with the Authority to have that, have that work performed. As Maureen had mentioned, INL Construction LLC of Manassas was the low bidder. They have done work for the county, I believe it was Parks and Rec, if I'm not mistaken, and has done good work for the county. So, the Authority, prior to our meeting, they did approve issuance of the contract with INL, again contingent on our review and our approval of it as well. And from a staff perspective, looking at budget, looking at, you know, other considerations, we would go, we would prefer to go forward with it without the apron, so it would be the low bid from the low bidder.
And just remind me what goes on at the transfer station?
We, all the weight, well, about seventy-five to eighty percent of the waste that's brought into the landfill goes to the transfer station. It's deposited on the transfer floor and then is reloaded into tractor-trailers and currently sent to a landfill up in Pennsylvania. The floor of the building, half of it was replaced twelve years ago, that's the better-looking portion here to the right. The left two bays are original to the building. Not a lot of activity goes on in that area, so that's why it was able to last that long. But the most prudent thing to do from an engineering standpoint, really from a construction standpoint, is at this time to replace the entire floor, make it thicker than what the second, first half is. And our goal is to get, you know, seven to ten, twelve years out of it, it'll be the last floor repair that is done at that facility before it's ultimately removed.
Now, and I'm not sure I was following, I apologize. So, what was the reason for the transfer? Did the scope change? Was it just over budget because of material stuff and how it's going?
The original cost estimate for this was done late, and I believe twenty-twenty-one, so fiscal twenty-two in preparation for twenty-three's budget. And, as we all know, the costs have gone up along the way. We do have some contingencies already in their bid for things below the floor that we may not know about at the present time, but that's the primary reason, it's just the cost of everything going up. Not, including those contingencies that are already built into that contract, we're looking at about nineteen percent, give or take a little bit, if you do not include a contingency, an additional contingency that is built into that hundred and thirty thousand dollars. We, and through our, through the Authority and through our engineering company, CQA Consultant, we will be on top of the contractor heavily to make sure that we are, do the best we can to not tip into, dip into that contingency.
Thanks.
Motion to approve entering into, I'm sorry, Commissioner, did you?
No.
I apologize. Motion to approve entering into a contract with the Northeast Maryland Waste Disposal Authority to use INL Construction LLC of Manassas, Virginia for Northern Landfill Transfer Station Floor Replacement without optional concrete apron in the amount of four hundred fourteen thousand eight hundred thirty-one dollars.
Second.
Yeah, I'm motioning a second, any discussion on this? Seeing here none, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, let's talk about solid waste facilities environmental monitoring systems. Okay, let's talk about solid waste facilities environmental monitoring systems, services, excuse me, over E, uh, M, MES.
The Office of Procurement in cooperation with the Bureau of Solid Waste requests the Board of Commissioners approval of an FY24 Environmental Monitoring Program contract renewal with Maryland Environmental Services in the amount of $232,680. Work includes permit and regulatory required environmental monitoring at the Northern Landfill and for closed landfills. Funds are included in the approved FY24 SWEF operating budget, and no additional funds should be necessary.
Okay, Commissioners, Maryland Environmental Service, or MES, as I'll continue to refer to them as, uh, was created by the Maryland General Assembly in 1970, essentially to assist jurisdictions with water, wastewater, solid waste, and other environmental matters. Uh, they became an independent state agency i- in 1993. Uh, Carroll County has been utilizing, uh, MES to perform our environmental monitoring since 2005, uh, at all of our facilities. So, their services include the permit where regulatory required sampling, analysis, and reporting for monitoring wells, surface water points like streams and ponds, uh, landfill gas migration monitoring at all of the facilities as well. Total, they, they touch somewhere in excess of 150 to 200 sampling points, uh, per year for us across all of the facilities. Uh, they also provide services related to the monitoring systems if it's required. Uh, they recently, they did some work for us, uh, at Bark Hill, to improve the vending syst- landfill gas vending system there. Uh, the fiscal '24 monitoring program is budgeted at $232,680. And as Maureen mentioned, those funds are included, are approved, in the fiscal '24 budget.
Okay.
Motion to approve a contract renewal with Maryland Environmental Service in the amount of $232,680 for environmental monitoring services at Northern, Hoods Mill, John Owings, Bark Hill, and Hodges Landfill, and draft and consummate an updated intergovernmental agreement covering these services and support.
Second.
I have a motion, I have a second, any discussion on this? Seeing here none, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you, Maureen.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Cliff, okay. Ryan, you gonna be comfortable?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, Reed, why don't you come on up, uh, closer, because you're gonna be jumping right into the fray. Get up here closer, so we don't have to move too fast. Okay, you got a pillow for yourself?
Uh-huh.
You got a pillow?
I left it in my office, but I'll be okay.
Go for it.
I, I'm gonna let Jason start real quick.
Morning Commissioners, just real quickly, um, if you hadn't had a chance to look out front, the grounds crew did a fabulous job out front, so you get a chance today. Nice day to walk out and take a look at that, and look at the, the good work that they've performed. Uh, wanna introduce you to, uh, our facilities manager, Derek Ward. Uh, he's been with the, uh, with the county for about a year and a half, almost two years. Uh, he manages day-to-day operations for the building side of the shop, which would be electrical, plumbing, carpentry, and, and that crew out there, so just wanted to introduce him today. Uh, he's standing in for Justin, so.
Okay.
Thank you, good morning.
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 All right. All right, the Office of Procurement in cooperation with the Bureau of Facilities requests your approval to award the purchase and installation of one Kohler diesel generator and 60-kilowatt transfer switch. This is a turnkey project for Fidelity Power Systems in the amount of $64,861. This unit will be installed at the Courthouse Annex. Kohler Power Systems was awarded a competitively bid contract through Sourcewell, which Fidelity is an authorized dealer. This amount is approved within the fiscal year '24 budget, and no additional funds should be required.
Good morning Commissioners, just a little bit of background on equipment. Equipment's over 40 years old, it's pretty much reached the end of its life. Um, this equipment serves all the critical infrastructure associated with, uh, IT, life safety, and so forth, so it's indeed, uh, required. Fidelity Power Systems, they've installed other generators in Carroll County, currently there's three other generation, uh, generators that have been, uh, replaced under contract. Um, and of course, replacement falls within the county's overall, general replacement program. All right?
Motion to approve the purchase and installation of one Kohler diesel generator for the Courthouse Annex to Fidelity Power Systems in the amount of $64,861.
Second.
Got a motion, second, any discussion? Seeing here none, all in favor?
Aye.
Let's talk about asbestos abatement.
All right. Uh, the Office of Procurement in cooperation with the Bureau of Facilities requests your approval for spending authority to approve Retro Environmental for asbestos abatement at the County Office Building in the amount of $43,185. Retro Environmental is currently a county, uh, currently a county-term contractor. This amount is approved in the fiscal year '24 budget, and no additional funds should be required.
Background on this, the, uh, stairwells will be replaced, so it would be roughly 660 square foot of two-by-two ceiling tiles, and 200, uh, 2,800 square foot of 12-by-12 vinyl floor tile within those stairwells, uh, the County Office Building. The work will take place, uh, about 12 work shifts, incomplete and performed, while ensuring the lowest impact in operation for Retro Environmental. Has also successfully performed similar work in the county, and follows all safety protocols.
You're taking away the physical fitness of those that are walking up and down the stairs.
Only for a short period of time.
Okay, just saying.
Motion to approve spending authority to the Bureau of Facilities to approve Retro Environmental for asbestos abatement at the County Office Building in the amount of $43,185.
Second.
Uh, motion, I got a second, that's just nasty work, though, abatement. Any discussion?
I was worried all the asbestos was in my office.
Yeah.
But so far, it's not.
It's just covered with a rug. That's right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Gentlemen.
And if I could, please pass along compliments on everything out front, I saw that last weekend, that was impressive.
Yes, very much so.
Hey Reed, come on up. What type of vehicles are we buying today?
A whole bunch.
I figure we are, go ahead, Ryan.
All right, the Office of Procurement in cooperation with the Bureau of Fleet Management and Warehouse Operations requests your approval to purchase one 2024 Chevy Silverado 1500 regular cab, and one 2024 Chevy Silverado 1500 crew cab from Hertrick Fleet in the amount of $87,138. This purchase will be made from a Howard County contract, uh, that Carroll County will utilize. This amount is within the fiscal year '24 budget, and no additional funds should be necessary.
Commissioners, we are requesting one truck for the Bureau of Building Construction for the position of project manager that was added. Um, that position, uh, performs site visits to the many capital improvement projects around the county. And the second truck requested for the Department of Land and Resource Management, uh, for the purpose of managing and inspecting the over 100 properties that participate in the land preservation program. Unfortunately, both trucks do have an expected lead time of six to nine months.
Right. Are these vehicles, um, and I don't know, and I don't expect you to answer, but Roberta, you may, um, do they go home with the drivers? Or are they, go to the motor pool and picked up?
I don't think either of these do, but-
Okay, just curious, I mean-
That's correct.
Thank you.
What's that?
I'm right. Yay.
Okay, thank you.
Motion to-
You're very quiet back there, I, I didn't even see you back there, so sorry, okay.
It's pretty quiet back there.
The take, the, the staff that are allowed to take home vehicles are people who generally would have to respond in a timely fashion for some kind of emergency situation.
Okay, thanks.
Motion to approve the purchase of one 2024 Chevrolet Silverado 1500 regular cab, and one 2024 Chevrolet Silverado 1500 crew cab from Hertrick Fleet in the amount of $87,138.
Second.
Got a motion, got a second, on the Chevys, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Let's talk about the Ford now.
All right, and the Office of Procurement in cooperation with the Bureau of Fleet Management and Warehouse Operations requests your approval to purchase one 2023 Ford F-150 Supercrew cab truck, four-wheel drive, from Hertrick Fleet in the amount of $45,000, uh, six thou- oh, 44 thou- I'm sorry, $45,066. This purchase will be made from Howard County contract that, that Carroll County will utilize. The amount is within the fiscal year '24 budget, and no additional funds should be necessary.
And this unit is, uh, a replacement for the Sheriff's Fleet. Um, the existing unit will be decommissioned and sold through auction, and the new vehicle is available for immediate purchase.
Just seems very inexpensive, 45,000, that's, I mean, unless it's stripped down, I mean, that's-
That's, that's the benefit for purchasing through the contract, so.
Yeah, no kidding. Okay.
Motion to approve the purchase of one 2023 Ford F-150 Supercrew cab truck, four-wheel drive, from Hertrick Fleet in the amount of $45,066.
Second.
I got a motion, got a second, any discussion? Seeing here none, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, let's repair a vehicle.
All right, and the Office of Procurement in cooperation with the Bureau of Fleet Management and Warehouse Operations requests your approval for repairs of Freightliner 108SD in the amount of $29,637.43 to TransTech Incorporated, which is Freightliner of York, who is an authorized Freightliner dealer. Freightliner covered the warranty repairs along with other warranty, unwarranted repairs that were needed. This amount is within the fiscal year '24 approved budget, and no additional funds should be necessary.
So, th- this is a dump truck unit used by the Bureau of Roads. Um, as Ryan had said, a portion of the repairs were covered, uh, covered under manufacturer warranty, uh, this balance is what was not covered.
Okay.
Motion to approve the repair work to the Freightliner 108SD to TransTech Incorporated in the amount of $29,637.43.
Second.
I got a motion, I got a second, any discussion on this one? Seeing here none, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, let's talk about, uh, a term contract over Delmarva Pump Center.
All right, the Office of Procurement in cooperation with the Bureau of Fleet Management and Warehouse Operations requests your approval to award a term contract to Delmarva Pump Center Incorporated to cover the cost of appar- apparatus, upfitting, repairs, diagnostics, fabrication, DOT inspections, preventative maintenance, and labor for service work not to exceed $250,000 per year. This purchase will be made through a Howard County contract that was competitively bid. This amount is within the fiscal year '24 adopted budget, and no additional funds should be necessary.
Delmarva Pump Center is an EVT certified shop, so they specialize in the emergency response vehicles, um, and DPC has come recommended by several of the volunteer fire companies for services for vehicles.
Motion to award a term contract to Delmarva Pump Center Incorporated not to exceed $250,000 per year.
Second.
I had a, I'm sorry, yeah, I had a general, general question, so you, you addressed it a little bit. The, obviously, if we're dealing with maintenance on fire vehicles, they're owned by the corporations, the volunteer companies. Is, are there similar contracts to do maintenance work? Because there have been questions made as to if there are, again, all the corporations own the vehicles, we've got a vendor who can fix them, but in a lot of the cases, regionally, they're used to taking them somewhere else to get work done. So, do you have any insight into that process as we try to, you know, transition to a more hybrid, uh, uh, you know, volunteer slash county force? Have we given any of that thought, how we're gonna move forward?
Uh, yes, sir, and, and that's, uh, part of this request today, is that they, uh, have used this vendor for repairs, so that's why we are looking to add them as a term contractor for the county. Uh, I have also shared the list of term contractors that the county currently has, uh, for non-emergency management vehicles and emergency management vehicles. Uh, so although it is a process, we are building that list of vendors that can provide those services, uh, that the companies will be able to, to utilize as well.
Okay, so it sounds like you're actually looking at almost approved vendors, so the, the companies can, they may have more, more than one to choose from.
Yes, sir.
But the importance being they use one of those vendors.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, and, okay, well, I'm sure if, well, I'm sure we'll get more input on how that's coming along, but that's important to know.
Yes, sir.
Thanks.
Okay, I saw a motion, I see a second. Correct?
Yes, correct.
Okay, any, any further discussion on this? Seeing here none, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, let's talk about, uh, three transit cargo vans.
All right, and the Office of Procurement in cooperation with the Bureau of Fleet Management and Warehouse Operations requests your approval to purchase three 2024 Ford Transit Cargo vans from Apple Ford in the amount of $17700, uh, $170,719.52. This purchase will be made from a Baltimore County contract that Carroll County will utilize. This amount is within the fiscal year '24 approved budget, and no additional funds should be necessary.
Two of these vans are replacements for the Bureau of Facilities, they will be outfitted as heating, heating and air conditioning technician vans, and the third van, uh, will be assigned to the Department of Fire and EMS to be used by their quartermaster position.
Okay.
Uh, these, um, are, as well, are expected to take between six and nine months to receive.
Wow. Okay.
Motion to approve the purchase of three 2024 Ford Transit Cargo Vans from Apple Ford in the amount of $170,719.52.
Second.
Got a motion, second, any discussion? Seeing here none, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, let's talk about the term contract Patriot Fire. I don't see.
The Office of Procurement in cooperation with the Bureau of Fleet Management and Warehouse Operations requests your approval to award a term contract to Patriot Fire LLC for emergency vehicles to cover the cost of apparatus, upfitting, repairs, diagnostics, fabrications, DOT inspections, preventative maintenance, and labor for service work not to exceed $250,000 per year. This purchase will be made through a Howard County contract that was competitively bid. This amount is within the fiscal year '24 adopted budget, and no additional funds should be necessary.
And as we discussed on the, on the previous, uh, agenda item, this is a vendor that's EVT certified, uh, and they do come highly recommended by many of the, uh, volunteer companies in the county.
Motion to award a term contract to Patriot Fire LLC not to exceed $250,000 per year.
Second.
Got a motion, second, any discussion? Seeing here none, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, let's talk about eight replacement trucks.
All right, the Office of Procurement in cooperation with the Bureau of Fleet Management and Warehouse Operations requests your approval to purchase eight trucks from Hertrick Fleet in the amount of $496,000, or, $496,907. This purchase will be made from a Maryland State Blanket Purchase Order contract and a Howard County contract that Carroll County will utilize. This amount is within the fiscal year '24 budget, and no additional funds should be necessary.
Uh, so of the, the eight vehicles being requested, three are, three are replacements for the, the Sheriff's Fleet, uh, four for the Bureau of Utilities, and one for the Bureau of Solid Waste. Um, of the eight vehicles, two are available for immediate purchase, uh, the other six will take between six and nine months to receive, and all of the DPW vehicles will be equipped with front snowplows and safety work lights.
And those that are being replaced are out for auction, or what?
Yes, so upon arrival of the new units, the existing units will be decommissioned and sold through auction, uh, with the exception of the unit for solid waste as an additional vehicle for the fleet. We've been working on this for a couple of years now, it will be used as a light-duty service vehicle, uh, at the landfill, and it will be, also be equipped with a fuel transfer pump, so they will be able to provide fuel to equipment, uh, at the facility.
And I always like, no additional funds should be necessary, especially when you're talking about $500,000.
Oh, yeah.
So, okay.
Motion to approve the purchase of eight replacement trucks from Hertrick Fleet in the amount of $496,907.
Second.
Got a motion, got a second, any discussion on this one? Seeing here none, all in favor?
Aye.
Ryan, next time bring a pillow, and you're doing well with the numbers.
I'm, I'm doing excellent with the numbers. Thank you.
It's all good, thanks Reed. Okay, item 14. Let's see, request approval to purchase land for the runway safety enhancement project. Lone and Unafraid.
Good morning.
Good morning Commissioners.
Good morning.
I'm here this morning to request your approval to purchase, uh, uh, plot, it's a 1.7, four, seven, roughly 1.75 acre, uh, piece of land, in, in connection with the airport runway safety improvement project, um, for $450,000. As a reminder, um, this property, uh, is both a residential and, uh, they're, they, they operate two businesses on this property, so this also includes, uh, relocation expenses as well. I apologize a little.
No worries, no worries.
Yeah. Uh, and, and as another reminder, um, this, this is the only property, we have to buy the, purchase the entire parcel, because it's in the runway protection zone.
You don't have a, yeah, please.
And we have FAA concurrence, and they will be participating 90% and MAA 5%, Carroll County 5%. And we have FAA concurrence and they will be participating 90% and MAA 5%, Carroll County 5%.
Right, so we're actually, so the 450,000 is the total. So we're paying 5% of that, so in other words, 22,500. So, okay.
But may or may not have to furnish cash flow till we get reimbursed.
Right.
Yes.
Motion to approve the purchase of land at 1531 Indian Valley Trail for $450,000.
Second.
I have a motion, I have a second. I really appreciate the due diligence and work that the staff has done in getting us to this position, so thank you and the entire team. It was a very collaborative effort and a lot of work, so.
Thank you.
Okay, any discussion on this one? Seeing here none, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, let's talk about, oh, my favorite thing's a change order. Request to increase the contract with Mans Woodward Studios for additional redesign and engineering modifications for Public Safety Training Center Phase Two. Y'all know how much I love change orders.
Indeed.
Morning, everybody.
Good morning, Commissioner.
Good morning, Commissioner.
Public Safety Training Center Phase Two is undergoing final architectural and civil engineering design. During the design process, the site was found to contain a previously used firefighting product known as PFAS. The discovery of this product is necessitating a retrofit of the regional stormwater management facility, which will provide stormwater management for the, for the site. In coordination with the Department of Resource Management's retrofit design and site plan modifications will need to be made. Mans Woodward Studios is the architect and has engaged with Whitman, Reichert &amp; Associates, who is the same civil engineering firm designing the stormwater management facility retrofit for resource management. The contract will include full coordination efforts by Mans Woodward associated with the redesign of the stormwater management plan. They will manage and design, they will manage the design team to ensure the new design is fully coordinated with the current proposed design and site layout and utilities. They will work closely with the civil engineer during the permitting and approval process. The Office of Procurement in cooperation with the Bureau of Building Construction, request your approval to increase the contract with Mans Woodward Studios in the amount of $166,600. This amount is within the adopted budget.
We are here to address any questions which you may have, judging by your expression, Commissioner Rossin, I'm sure you have.
Not questions, just everywhere we're going to turn, we're going to see PFAS. And, you know, it's going to be the gift that keeps on giving. I mean, and we know that. It's going to be difficult, you know, to finally finish a project like this when every time you turn and you, you know, look, it's, it's going to say, oh, there's PFAS detected. We need a change order, we need additional. Maybe it's just the world we're going to live in for quite some time, and we recognize that, but it's just, you know, I understand the change order, I understand, you know, it's very difficult. The purpose of it just, you know, kind of makes the, you know, little hairs in the back just raise up saying, oh, boy, here we go, because PFAS is going to be the gift that keeps on giving, you know. I, I don't know your opinions on that, but.
And Commissioner, to your point, maybe, maybe from now on, what we need to do is we need to, to look at these projects as if PFAS was necessarily going to be a part of them, so that is part of the total cost rather than having to go through all these change orders. Like if we tell a company, you know, we're doing such and such here, and we anticipate that PFAS is going to be a part of it, we just need to have that as part of the scope of what we're looking for.
Mm-hmm. Well, I think, and I'm concerned of that, telling us this within budget. Hopefully, the PFAS is in the budget. I don't know, you also got to watch if you make the scope
Right.
too wild, and there isn't any, then you may be paying somebody for something that
Right.
they didn't do.
That, and that's my concern.
Maybe a change order, but if, and you did hear it was in the budget, right?
Yeah, I heard it's in the budget, but, yeah, but I, I do agree with your sentiment back to Commissioner Vigliotti that, not saying that contractors would take advantage of scopes of work, but they do know what scopes of work will allow them to take advantage of. So, again, this, I believe, is just a gift that's going to keep on giving, and we just have to constantly be aware.
And this is a newer issue, I mean, this Public Safety Training Center
Yep.
expansion and development, redevelopment has been going on for years because it's been in several phases. And so, yeah, PFAS sort of rose up in the middle of all this.
And PFAS.
But, but it's a thought for future, for sure.
And PFAS is new, but to me, it's like, do you, an excavator, do you want them to include rock? Or do you want them to exclude rock and maybe save some money negotiating when it happens? And it depends on the property.
Right.
Right.
We, we are identifying the, the hotspots out there, so that we're going to know where it is, so that we don't mix good soil with bad soil, and we can identify just the areas that we're need to go to address.
So we know what to anticipate right now.
Correct.
So in the FY '24 budget, the Commissioner has approved, I can't remember the exact amount of money, a PFAS budget for PFAS mitigation at the Public Safety Training Center. And I can't remember what the amount was, I think it started out at 5 million, and I think we might have reduced it.
I think it was like 3 million.
Maybe 3 million or so, I think you're right, Commissioner Rossin. So when I see this, my first question is, okay, we set aside that money for PFAS mitigation at this training center, but this change order is completely separate from that, and the money that's needed can't come from, so I'm trying to, I'm trying to figure out where these two projects.
Yep. Good question.
Meat, thank you.
Yeah, yeah, great question, so.
Don't eat.
Under the planning and land resources, is that the name of it now? Chris Heinz Group, he hired a consultant Tetra Tech who specializes in PFAS remediation. They are on board for this project, they're doing the sampling, like Dean mentioned. We actually, I think, are waiting for the test results as we speak. But as a result of their study, their study of PFAS and their specialties and what we have to do different on the site, it's causing the architect some additional work, it's causing the site civil some additional work, and that's really the root of this change order.
Okay, so, but in my understanding of that money we set aside, it, it was to be used for removal as well as the engineering study with the company. So I just wanted to figure out why that, these funds that are needed wouldn't come from that 3 million dollars.
I don't think that money was specifically for the Public Safety Training Center.
I thought it was for PFAS remediation, yeah, I think the 3 million.
And since this project has the money in the budget, there's no need to pull it from some other, there's no transfer necessary, so.
Yeah, I, I guess you can see my concern there, I, I thought it was for the Public Safety Training Center, but I.
I don't remember it that way.
I think the 3 million, I thought it was a capital dollar amount.
I think you're correct.
I'm waiting for Ted to like walk through the door, and he's nodding, 1, 2, 3, 3.
You see my, you see where my question is, is rooted.
100% understand, yeah, and, and again, that's something we can work with the Budget Office, like you said, it, it is in the project budget already for the Public Safety Training Center. We're here because of the change order, because of the change in scope of work. I think if it ever got to a budget transfer discussion, we could probably
Okay.
let Ted talk about it, no. We could probably pull from, from that pot of money for this project.
Okay, because again, what also leads me is a concern that, are we spending 3 million dollars for just a company to do testing? I didn't think that was either, so Mr. Zaleski has rushed in.
I don't know if you've heard anything.
A firestorm of PFAS.
I have no idea what we're talking about.
Good, so the answer then is what?
No, 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 so.
I have no idea what I'm talking about either.
Ted, we're regarding, you know, it's a, a change order regarding PFAS remediation over at the Training Center. And the question, you know, it's in the budget, but the question is kind of where is it coming from within the budget? And how much do we allocate in our FY '24 deliberations?
Right now, there's, I think this is right, $500,000 a year in operating funds.
Okay.
I don't remember which budget it's in. Then we have some capital funding scheduled further out.
3 million, right, some, I think it was.
I, I don't remember for sure.
I think, I think you're correct.
And that money wasn't specific toward any particular project, was it? It was just for potential.
It's just acknowledgement, we're going to be doing something.
And it wasn't in, it wasn't in the CIP for FY '24, it was for a future year.
Yes.
I think it was like 25, 26.
I think, if I, if I understand it right, which is 50/50. So it's in the budget. Then we had to pay somebody to do a study to find out where it was. Now we're paying the design people for changes caused in the design, and then someday we're going to pay a contractor to dig it up and haul some away and not mix it, and you're going to minimize that. So, so really, this is paying this, these people.
Yes.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I think you summarized it fairly well.
Yeah, and hopefully, it's all covered in the budget.
Yes.
Well, hope's not the course of action, but I think.
You want to see that in writing?
No, I, I, I think, I think you're capturing it, I think we have money in the operational budget for PFAS mediation or removal. Then we have money in the capital regarding PFAS. Is that correct or no?
For future years.
Right, the, the operating money is really not so much about the remediation as it is about learning what we need to know and figuring about what we're going to do. Then eventually, there will be a capital project, which will be, we're doing something.
Countywide.
No, this is just about the Public Safety Training Center.
3 million for the public training center.
Right, we have, we haven't tackled any larger idea of what we might need to do around the county.
So that money was site specific, that was a part of the question.
Oh, okay, yes. Yes, this is specifically in reaction to the discovery of PFAS at that spot.
At, okay, and, and that's, I appreciate that clarification as well.
Yeah, it's. So I, I think we're back to my original concern then, I think, so, I don't know, maybe we need, maybe we just need to see all these numbers in one place in terms of the CIP, the, the money we've allocated.
Okay, well, there's real, I mean, we, we can show it to you, there's not a whole lot to it. I mean, if you go to our operating plan, you'll see $500,000 a year. I don't remember for exactly how many years, but there's a string of them. And then we hit a year, which is what I say, here's what we expect, we'll probably be doing the capital project. And that was, we had 5 million dollars in the recommendation, the board reduced that, you said 3 million, I don't remember for sure, but, but.
I think it was.
But some, some number.
Something we certainly need to keep an eye on.
And especially if, what we're talking about is the Training Center specific. It's a pretty big county.
Yes.
And we're going to be having to look at a lot of areas, especially where the expectation of PFAS resides.
Yeah, and we have, we have a huge question mark hanging over us here. We have no, truly no idea what we might be forced to get into. And I think it's probably premature to try and have this discussion, but at some point, we'll have to talk about, do we want one large capital project? Or are we going to do a series of capital projects for, you know, Site 1, Site 2, Site 3? And I, I don't know enough right now to even suggest what I would think.
Well, they have bomb sniffing dogs, maybe they have PFAS sniffing dogs, and get them out there, and because it's out there.
We're developing them as we speak.
I'm telling you, it's terrifying.
This money for design, for the study, for moving it, all is in the capital budget as part of the project. None of this is ongoing operating.
There is no capital project yet.
Wait, 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 we're talking about the item in front of you for this change order.
The change order.
Yes, that is part of the Phase 2 to the Public Safety Training capital project.
It is a capital project.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Motion for a change order to award the increase of the contract with Mans Woodward Studios for additional redesign and engineering modifications for the Public Safety Training Center Phase 2 in the amount of $166,600.
Second.
Okay, I got a motion, I got a second, I appreciate this discussion, appreciate Commissioner Garen bringing this up because it is complex, and we need to kind of get our hands understanding both the operational and capital side of this and the expansion, because as y'all, I don't care for change orders, but with all that said, excuse me, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, let's talk about.
Thank you, Commissioners, appreciate your time this morning.
Thank you.
Andy, why don't you come on up here, let's talk about odor control equipment for Carroll Highlands.
Some additional.
Well, he's making his way up, can I correct some numbers?
Yeah, sure, just bear with me. Purchase of odor control equipment for Carroll Highlands Sewage Pumping Station, interesting, yes.
Okay, I got my memory refreshed, it's $250,000 a, a year, and there is 3 million dollars, it's in fiscal year '24. And I think in an earlier iteration, we had the capital budget following, but we had cash that we put into it. So rather than wait to do it someday, we just created the project, so it does exist now.
So I think my recollection was, was correct, there's money sitting there. And anyway, it's just something we're going to have to, I think, probably talk about.
Oh, yeah, we're going to be talking about this every year for years.
Yeah, this is a gift, like I said, a gift that's going to keep on giving, so, okay. Okay, yeah, I'm very interested in this one with how we're going to deal with Carroll Highlands Sewage Pumping Station.
Good morning, gentlemen.
Good morning.
Carrie?
The Office of Procurement in cooperation with the Bureau of Utilities requests your approval to award a contract for the purchase of odor control equipment for the Carroll Highlands Sewage Pumping Station to Quava Water Technologies LLC of Sarasota, Florida in the amount of $85,900. This equipment was recently advertised for bid on the public purchase, and one proposal was received. The proposal submitted by Quava, I'm sorry. Water Technologies is within the engineer's estimate and represents fair value. The bid amount is also within the adopted budget and no additional funds will be necessary.
Okay.
So gentlemen, the Carroll Highlands Sewage Pumping Station is located in the eastern portion of the Freedom District Service area to the south of Maryland 26. As per the briefing paper, the pumping station was constructed in the 1970s. It conveys an average of 330,000 gallons of wastewater each day. I believe it's our third largest sewage pumping station in our fleet. The Carroll Highlands facility is located within a residential area, and concerns have been raised by the, by the local residents regarding odors emitted from the pumping station, especially during the warm weather months. When the pumping station was constructed, it was equipped with a hydrogen peroxide odor control system. That system is now obsolete, can no longer be maintained, and has been offline for an extended period of time. And, and an analysis was performed by one of the Bureau's Civil Term Consultants, and it has been determined that the most effective means of odor control at this facility would be an activated carbon media system. And what that system basically is, it, it captures the odors via, via carbon cartridges. So as, as these cartridges wear out, they simply pop out and then new ones are installed. It's a, it's a very straightforward means of maintenance. This agenda item is for the purchase and delivery of a complete activated carbon media control system. There is adequate space available to house the system inside of the facility with no additional construction. And once the cut sheets of the equipment have, have been provided to us, the installation of the equipment will be awarded to a term contractor. And I will, I will definitely be before you in the future at some point to talk about that in more detail. Any questions for me?
Is this going to make the folks on a Freedom Trail in the Freedom Park happy regarding the odor? Or is this Nell's Acres senior living on 26?
The primary complainants are Nell's Acres, but it should be noticeable to everybody in the area. And I have advised Nell's Acres residents that, yes, this will definitely improve the odor control, but it is a large wastewater pumping station, and it's not 100% foolproof.
Hey, you're going to make me into a hero if you take away any of that odor. I, I probably get called every few weeks.
So this is replacement of an odor system with hopefully also a better system.
Absolutely, and, and we, we've conducted testing out there, we're very confident that it, it will work in a, in a very nice fashion.
That's fantastic.
The, the issue that we have right now is lead time with the equipment. As with anything else, nothing is stocked anymore, so there will be a lead done. I'm not sure what that is yet, but there will be a lead done.
And there's more construction out there on 26, the Pans are building a second Nell's Acres development, so, good, good forward thinking.
And the pumping station is adequately sized to handle all, all the upstream new, new development, in case you were wondering that.
Commissioner Rossin, I'm sorry.
I want her to watch you make the motion and correct you if she has to on some of the words.
I will, I will do my utmost to be as precise as possible. Motion, well, Commissioner Rossin, do you want to take this, no, all right, because, you know, you have a special interest in it.
Keep going.
Motion to award a contract for the purchase of odor control equipment for the Carroll Highlands Sewage Pumping Station to Evacua? Evocua, Vacua?
Evacua.
Evacua?
Evacua, yeah.
It sounds like it's from Florida, it sounds like, it sounds like it's Florida.
I think you want to say, what's the water?
Evian?
No, the other one, Aqua. Aqua, yeah, Evian was, yeah, that one was on my list, too.
Evacua Water Technologies LLC in the amount of $85,900.0.
Second.
I got a motion, got a second and discussion on this, really appreciate the work being done, all in favor?
Aye.
Oh, you're going to make me a hero if this thing works.
It will work.
Okay, I'm.
Confidence.
You have no idea. I get it from Wesley Freedom, I get it from residents, so, okay. Oh, wonderful, another change order to extend the construction inspection services for the Sykesville, Maryland 851, in other words, Main Street Water and Sewer Main Improvements Project. Okay?
The Office of Procurement in cooperation with the Bureau of Utilities requests the Board of County Commissioners approval of a change order to Whitman, Reichert &amp; Associates in the amount of in the amount of $28,470 for a 40 working day extension of construction inspection services for the Sykesville, Maryland 851 Main Street Water and Sewer Main Improvements Project. The cost of these improvements is within the adopted budget and capital project. No additional funding will be necessary.
Now, bear with me on this one, Commissioners. The, the Main Street Water and Sewer Main Improvements Project is in the final stages of construction at this time. The remaining work consists generally of punch list items. Some of the punch list items are the fault of the contractor. These include construction delays due to low production rates, quality control issues with a segment of the current in place sewer main pipelining, and delays because of changes in field personnel. Because of these factors, the construction activity will exceed the contracts allotted 263 working days. This item, as Carrie said, is for the extension of construction inspection services for 40 days through late November. The full amount of this extension may not be required. The presence of a full-time inspector is needed onsite to ensure quality installation and to resolve day-to-day construction matters and questions. The Bureau will be seeking reimbursement from the contractor to recover the costs for these additional construction inspection services. So these are fully because of the, the delays at the fault of the contractor, not because of anything associated with the project itself.
I'm glad I were with you because that was going to be my question, was are we going to recoup this somehow? So, thank you for answering that ahead of time.
I mean.
This is the project that ties into the paving that's being done. It's, it's been multiple contracts on this same road.
Yes.
And this is one of them.
The state's next task is to, is to re, rehabilitate, replace their storm drainage system, which is going to be an extensive project. And once that is done, the paving work will be completed.
So, so we had to do the water and sewer, the state's doing the storm drain and milling and paving.
Correct.
Yeah, and their intent is for them to give it, their intent then is to try to give it back to the town. But the town doesn't want it until it's fixed.
Yes, once it's done. And this is for inspection?
Correct.
So this is for inspection of them failing, another company failing at its work, and you believe we're going to be able to recuperate the dollars?
I'm confident they're, we're, we're, we're having those conversations with the contractor at this point in time. And, and again, we, we, we need inspection services out there and my staff cannot self-inspect this magnitude of a project. It's a full-time job.
Sure, do we get, um, in order to recuperate the dollars, and this is, again, beyond my understanding, is there a legal activity that takes place in preparation for this? Do we document it some way to, to create an agreement of recuperation? Or when it's all said and done, say, oh, by the way, give us this amount?
At this point in time, we're, we're, we've initiated those conversations with the contractor. They, we, we still have some other construction change orders that I will, that I will be talking about in the future. So we're trying to balance, we're, we're attempting to get a reduction in those costs to make up for these inspection costs. And our clap that we have over the contractor is, is we hold 10% retainage of the project. So, so we do have quite a, quite a, quite a large amount.
But, but we as a team sport and we should include, I would expect, our legal support as well, correct?
If we run into complications, absolutely.
But in, in the, in defense of contractors, if there were unforeseen conditions, utility lines that weren't known about, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, it, it, the delay might not just be bad work, it could be unforeseen conditions.
That's very correct. These, this, this extension is, is absolutely associated with, with contractor issues though.
It is.
And I will talk about some of the additional scope of work that we've expanded the contractor's work to include within the next several weeks.
Motion to approve a change order to WRA in the amount of $28,470 and zero cents for a 40 working day extension of construction inspection services for the Sykesville, Maryland 851 Main Street Water and Sewer Main Improvements Project.
Second.
I got a motion, I got a second, I appreciate the attempt in defense to the contractor world.
No, no, I just, I didn't know if this was unforeseen conditions or, and I don't want to get in the battle. I've heard some of it.
Got it. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you both very much.
Chris, is there any, open, anybody on the phone?
She has reminded me I'm on the government's side now several times.
Chris?
No, sir, we have no, we have no phone callers.
Okay, is there anything for open admin at this time?
No, sir.
No, okay, Wanda, why don't you come on up?
Hello, Wanda, how are you?
Okay, Monday, October 30th, Tuesday, October 31st. Since Commissioner Garen left the room, I think he's dressing up as a warlock or something like that for Halloween. No, I'm kidding. Wednesday, November 1st, we have Light of Carol Awards over at Reese Volunteer Fire Company. And Light of Carol Awards, that's the library, right? That's CCPL, correct? Okay, and Commissioners Gordon and Kyler are attending in the morning. At 4:30 PM is the Adult Drug Treatment Court Graduation. Commissioners Gordon, Kyler, and I will be attending. And then the Heart of the Civil War Heritage has an event over at the Weinberg Center in Frederick. If anybody's attending or not, don't know. Then that evening, the University of Maryland Medical Center recognition over at the France Merrick Performing Arts Center in Baltimore. I'll be attending, hmm, okay.
Did they do your hip in a performing arts center?
They didn't do it in performing arts center, but I'll tell you, it was a performance all right. Thursday, we have an open session, and, let's see. Introduction of, okay, so, excuse me, the new executive director of the Carroll County Youth Services Bureau, Mr. Sam Baumann, will be coming in to share, I believe, mission vision and his upfront goals as he takes on the CCYSB. We will then talk about the approval of projects within self-help project requests for fall of 2023. And that'll be the first opportunity we have, Mr. Bob Hicks come in from Reckon Parks. And he'll be in with Ms. Lisa Carroll, who again, I would like to openly share that she just did a phenomenal job as acting in waiting for Mr. Hicks to get on board. Then we're going to talk about Leister Park Playground Surfacing Replacement with Reckon Parks. And then we'll talk about Stormwater Management Maintenance Term Contract, and that'll be Janet O'Meara coming in from Land Resource Management. We will talk about bid approval and contract award Carroll County Housing Study in RFP that we're putting out from Planning and Land Management. Briefing, Discussion, Decision, Exercise on an Option to Purchase for the Joseph and Nona Schwartzbeck Property. Nona, it's almost like Nona, like grandma.
Yeah.
And then we'll talk about bid and contract approval, Congregate Meals RFP, Request for Proposal over at Citizen Services. And then Bid Approval and Contract Award on Home Delivered Meals, another RFP over at Citizen Services. I take it they're two different senior centers. Approval for, to purchase a replacement of non-supported UPS or UPS, okay. What does UP stand for?
Universal Power Supply?
Universal Power Supply, thank you. Approval to.
Uninterruptible power.
That's what it is, that's right, uninterrupted. Approval to purchase computers for Emergency Operations Center. So Ms. Hawkins will have a couple of things to talk about. And then she'll talk about the Emergency Notification System or ENS. We'll talk Grant Fund Acceptance for, again, within the Emergency Management System, the Urban Area Security Initiative, the State Homeland Security Grant Program, and the Emergency Management Performance Grants. We will talk about a contract renewal, project management software subscription renewal from our IT. And then Mr. Ripper will then talk about judicial dialogue, software maintenance, and support renewal. Next, we'll talk about a fire alarm upgrade over at the North Carroll Library and approval to purchase storm drain replacement over Wolf Hill Drive from DPW. It's going to be a long morning. Stream.
Might want to think about moving some of these.
Stream stabilization, yeah, we'll take a look at this. Improvements in the vicinity of Stone Manor Wastewater Pumping Station with DPW. And then Construction Inspection Services Stream Stabilization Improvement in the vicinity of, what, wait a second, are these the same?
It appears to be.
They both look like they're both contract awards. There may be two separate contract awards over at Stone Manor, but let's take a look at that. Approval to accept the EDA Award to the Office of Tourism Carroll County Farm Museum for a mobile stage and authorize the use of county funds. Then we'll approve, approval to purchase SL-75 Mobile Stage. Okay, so we're moving money, then the intent is to purchase or use the money to purchase the stage. Discussion, Possible Decision Regarding Drug Treatment Center Nursing Home and Assisted Living Facilities is scheduled, and then we will go into closed for land acquisition. At 2:00 PM that afternoon on Thursday is the Carroll County MDOT or Maryland Department of Transportation, CTP, what does that stand for?
Something.
Consolidated Transportation Plan.
Priority, I'm sorry, priority or plan, plan?
Yes.
Plan?
Yes.
Okay.
Plan, priority, yes.
What they said, Fall Tour Meeting, and we expect MDOT staff and SHA to be in attendance. And all municipalities and delegation are absolutely welcome to attend and they've been formally invited as well. But all Commissioners will be in attendance at 2:00 PM that afternoon. Friday, November 3rd, oh, I'll, I'll be attending the Howard County Good Scout Breakfast over at Turf Valley and.
Do you know her?
Do I know who?
The, the, the one they're honoring?
Over at Howard County or Carroll County? This is Howard County.
Oh, okay, so. Maybe the Carroll County group, she's from down your area.
Yeah, Carroll, Carroll County's in December, which I'll be attending.
Gotcha.
Expect our Eagle Scout over here to attend as well, but.
Yep, I'll be there.
That's down the road. And then MREC Vision Dinner, MREC stands for.
It's Maro, it's Marriage Resource Education Center, I think. And I'll, Wanda, could you put me down for that too, please? Thank you.
So Commissioner Vigliotti and Garen will be attending that. Saturday, nothing scheduled, Commissioner Gordon's got the podcast. I have an Eagle Scout Court of Honor, Grace Gross, and I believe there's a second person now involved in that. And I'll be at the Sykesville Freedom District.
And Wanda, I have one thing for the 31st. The Historical Society of Carroll County's annual meeting is at 11:30 that, on the 31st. I'll be in attendance at that.
Okay, following week, November 6th, we have nothing scheduled. On the 7th, Reckon Parks Volunteer Hall of Fame Awards. Commissioner Kyler, Vigliotti, and I are going to be in attendance over at Charles Carroll Community Center. Wednesday, November 8th, is Opialy Prevention Coalition Meeting. Commissioner Kyler will be attending in the morning. Farm Museum Board Meeting, Commissioner Vigliotti will be attending that morning. And a Board of Education Board Meeting that afternoon at 5:00 PM, and we'll see who would like to attend.
I will check, yep, I'll check my schedule.
Commissioner Vigliotti is looking forward to attending, so he'll check his schedule. Thursday, November 9th, we go into open. We have a couple priority Carroll and proclamations to provide. And then we go into a Budget Quarterly Updates from Mr. Zaleski, Approval of Bylaws, Revisions for the Carroll County Local Management Board, the LMB. Ms. Steckel and her team will be here. Approval to purchase the Leister Park Playground Surfacing Replacement, DPW with Mr. Hicks, not DPW, excuse me, Reckon Parks.
Was that on the last meeting?
Was it Leister? Yeah, it was, there was something Leister on the last.
It was the playground surfacing.
So let's check that.
They really want to surface it.
Yes.
Very excited.
Maybe they think we're going to vote against it next week and so they want to come back.
That's a good, it is on here.
I think it's on both.
Yeah, so.
We might consider taking it off the second because it's so full already.
Yeah.
Yes, agreed.
And just keep being on the 9th?
Agreed.
Okay.
We have something on the schedule right now regarding a request for public hearing dealing with adult-use cannabis. However, we may be pushing that to the right. So let's just be prepared to take that off the schedule.
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner Ross. With no objection, yeah, I'd like to do that.
No objections.
Thank you for mentioning it.
And then Request for Public Hearing, excuse me, Bulk Requirements in the Commercial Zones, Text Amendment to Chapter 158 of the Zoning Code. And Mr. Heine and his team will lead us through that. Instructional Technology Showcase at 3:00 PM over at the Community College. Commissioner Garen is attending that. On Friday, November 10th, the offices will be closed in observance of Veterans Day. 8:30 that morning, Thursday, We Honor Our Veterans Breakfast over at Shock Trauma or Shock Auditorium over at Carroll Hospital, Community Hospital. It's a really good event.
I'll be at that as well, Wanda, if you could add me.
It, it's just very well-received and been doing it for years. A Flag Retirement Ceremony at 12:30 PM. I've been invited to attend over the Knights of Columbus at James Cardinal Gibbons Assembly Number 379 in Westminster. On Saturday, for our Veterans Day, there's the Hessen Snyder Post 170 Veterans Day Program. Commissioner Vigliotti will be attending up in Tonton Town. At 11:00 AM, there's a Veterans Day Observance in Monocacy Valley Memorial, VFW, Post 6918. And I will be, I was asked to, and I'll be attending that. At 2:00 PM that afternoon is the Eagle Scout Court of Honor. We have a lot of great Eagle Scouts, great young men and women making it through that stage. That's over to Freedom Optimist Club. And then that afternoon at 4:00 PM, Sykesville's having a Veterans Day event over at the Townhouse. I expect other Veterans Day events to be occurring, I just don't have them on here. So if we get them and put them on the schedule, that'd be great.
Also, on the 11th, the Formal Students and Friends of Robert Moten have their meeting at 10:30 AM on the 11th, and, and I've told them, last month I couldn't, I told them, I, I will. But like you're saying, both Friday and Saturday, I'm kind of checking to see what's happening at the local American Legion, you know.
I bet you there is something over 200.
I want to go to something, but I want to do the stuff.
But you said there are meetings at 10:30 on Saturday at Robert Moten? I may be able to attend that, I'll, I'll look at that.
Okay.
Okay.
So per earlier discussion, could we move some of the more routine procurement items from the second to the, the ninth? Particularly because with the, that Fall Tour Meeting starting at two, we're going to have a lot of people from municipalities here at the office. I think it'd be nice for us to be able to, you know, greet some of those folks as they get here and.
Right.
Kind of catch up a little bit, great opportunity to do that.
And eat something beforehand.
And eat something more important.
Oh, that's something I don't need to do, but. Oh, that's something I don't need to do, but, um, okay.
Thanks. Just a couple things, and good.
We good, Wanda?
Yes.
We good, Mr. Burke? Sure about that?
Yes.
Okay. I need a motion to recess and go into closed for land acquisition and legal?
Motion to go into closed for land acquisition.
Motion to go into closed for land acquisition and legal.
You can do them both.
And then adjourn afterwards. So moved.
Second.
Did you say land acquisition and legal?
Yes.
I couldn't hear.
Sorry.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.